Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Saco City Council meeting for Monday, November 17th, 2025 at 6:30 PM. We'd like to make note of all councilors present this evening with the exception of Councilor Berman, who has been excused. And with us tonight, we do have Deputy City Administrator Emily Prescott, excuse me. Would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you very much. Moving on to item number four this evening, there is nothing under general. Item number five, Committee Correspondence to Council. Are there any councilor members wishing to speak? Counselor Hewitt?
On behalf of the Library Committee, I'd like to let you know the tea for the gap, the tea on November 22nd has been canceled, but the gala is going to occur November 22nd, Saturday at 6:30 PM. Tickets are available for $25. Guests will receive five raffle tickets and drink ticket and refreshment and more. Tickets will be available to purchase online beginning November 1st. If you're planning on attending and buying tickets in advance, that will help them plan for the food. Tickets will also be available at the door.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, not seeing anyone seeking recognition. Moving on to item number six, that is public comment this evening. If there are any members of the public wishing to speak, please step forward, state your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes to address the council.
Good evening. My name is Inga Brown. I live at 161 Simpson Road. Good evening. This evening, I'd like to just make a couple comments. The action item, one reading resolution regarding contract zones. I'd like to simply state that I agree with the letter submitted to council from Michael Daleham as well as Kelly Archer. I do believe that there are some edits that need to be perhaps entertained by council on this resolution. And I also would like to underscore that this council had asked for public review of individual contract zones and why they have been determined to be in certain categories, and that was something that council had requested. I do believe that public inclusion and review in that process for full sunshine is required. There are too many questions on these contract zones that your constituents, that taxpayers are affected by, and I believe that that review should be in full public disclosure. Lastly, I'd like to make some comments this evening about item 10, your executive session. I would like to simply note that at the November 4th Planning Board meeting, an applicant publicly disclosed that the intercreditor agreement was between the Ecology School and the City of Saco. And I would like to, for a moment, talk about partnerships. I think we all agree that partnerships are based on respect, teamwork, transparency, full disclosure, good negotiation, and not self-serving goals. That's what a partnership means to me. I would ask that in your discussion, you remain clear-eyed and level-headed about what a partnership between the city and an applicant means, what it looks like, and what the citizens of Saco should or should not be asked to carry on their shoulders. This item has been a folly from the start. It has been problematic from the start. Numbers are numbers, facts are facts, and words count. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I thought I lost it.
That's okay. Good evening.
Kelly Archer, 185 Bradley Street. I, you did receive a couple of emails over the weekend, quite lengthy, quite detailed. And I want to reiterate, reemphasize a couple of items. One is on the contract zone, and I deserve answers to these questions. The citizens deserve answers. Someone, please do so. I'm going to repeat in the bulleted items that you received. Unanswered at the workshop meeting was the question of the current status of the contract zoning agreements that had been entered and approved, followed by, "We have researched the issue and have found no case law." CCA's and approvals need clarity. Where, I can't find that whole conversation that I've been expecting for a year about the contract zones. Where is it on the floor? I need to hear it from my counselors. I need to hear it from the mayor. We need to know. Has the code enforcement officer looked at all of them? All I've read was that the attorney looked at four. That was provided. What happened to all the other ones that are going into the buckets? Why are they in the buckets? And who's, have you made the decision? Have you looked at them? And then it goes to staff. And then it gets out in the open. I need to know. Is the code, did the code enforcement officer engage the council in an open session and weigh in all the approvals for each of the problematic CZs? Are there currently violations that render some invalid? What's in those buckets? Buckets. I'll read them. And am I going to pick up an invalid one? I, after all this history of seven years, I believe I will. Where is the code enforcement officer's comprehensive report detailing each individual contact zone and approval? Where's the approval with the contract zone? And for you to look at in order to make sure that they are in compliance, this is your job. Now, we'll go on to, do not enter into that intercreditor agreement in regards to the Ecology School. You got several documents. You know why I found them? It's like public documents. This particular entity with extensions and expirations, it's like, don't do it. Don't do it. And the BPI is also in question. I'm going to the state. It's like, I don't know what the implications are going to be, but this has got to stop, and it's got to stop now. And to the public, I'm looking right at you. If you're watching, or if you're going to watch this video, request of your counselors, those documents that I sent over the weekend with all the company supporting documents. You will then know what's going on in the city. Please do it. Contact your counselors. And if that doesn't happen for you, through the city clerk. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, not seeing anyone seeking recognition. Moving on to item seven, that is action items. And we do have four items this evening. Item A is one reading, an update to the supported entities' request procedure, and that is Counselor Hatch.
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. On November 10th, 2025, city staff presented a proposed application for municipal social services funding for supported entities to request funding from the City of Saco. Currently, no form exists, and requests are in the form of letters received from the various entities. A standard application will ensure information is correct and complete, while also creating a more uniform procedure for entities to submit their funding requests to the city. Be it ordered that the City Council hereby approves the application for municipal social services funding as amended and included in the November 17th, 2025 City Council meeting packet. I move to approve the order.
Motion has been made by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Johnston. Any discussion or comments on the item? Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. I think overall, it looks great. Just wanted to, I wasn't here last week, so that was the first opportunity for comments. But, and I just really wanted to thank staff for hearing my comments and other councilors' comments during the budget cycle and acting on this without really any of us having to ask. So, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. I just want to, first of all, if I may, with interim city administrator, I, like last week, I was able to track my proposed changes into the amended documents. I appreciate you catching those. I just, on behalf of Counselor Berman, I just want to make sure that he, his comments were also captured. If you could address that for me, and then I have additional comments.
So, I, we have received those comments. I was working with Michelle Beasley on them today. I can show you a little bit of progress, but we have not been able to incorporate those comments into the document yet. I also received some comments from Counselor Parks that we haven't been fully able to incorporate into this evening's document in the packet. So, it might be appropriate to give us a few more days, put that together, and bring it back to you all for the final version.
So, hearing that, I guess I would make a motion to table to the November 24th meeting to be sure that all councilors' proposed amendments are in there. And so, I'll make that as a motion.
Thank you. Motion to table has been made by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Parks. Roll call vote. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0. Okay, moving on to item B. That's the final reading of the amendments to the Saco Code, Chapter 112, General Assistance Appendices, and that is Counselor Edwards.
Thank you, Mayor. Each year, main municipal association presents municipalities with new appendices for their city ordinance, which need to be reviewed and adopted. Be it ordered that the City Council approves a second and final reading of amendments to Saco Code, Chapter 112, General Assistance Program appendices, and MMA, General Assistance ordinance. I move to approve the order.
Thank you. Motion has been made by Counselor Edwards. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hewitt. Any discussion or comment on this item? Okay, roll call vote. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0. Okay, moving on to item C. That is an item tabled on October 20th, 2025, and it is one reading for the city street acceptance requests per Chapter 186 standards of Amari Court and Doopy Drive in the Amari Springs subdivision, and that is Counselor Parks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to remove this item from the table.
Motion has been made by Counselor Park to untable. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hatch. Roll call vote. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to untable passes 5-0. Counselor Parks?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I apologize for not memorizing this by now. Jason Labonte of Home Innovations LLC requests city street acceptance review per Chapter 186 of city ordinance for Amari Court and Doopy Drive with associated project infrastructure as indicated on the subdivision plan. The planning board approved the Amari Springs subdivision on October 24th, 2023. These roads were designed to public city street standards. The punch list issued from Public Works has been completed. I move to accept Amari Court and Doopy Drive as city streets pursuant to Chapter 186 ordinance provisions.
Thank you. Motion has been made by Counselor Parks. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Johnston. Any discussion or comment on the item? Okay, that's, oh, Counselor Johnston?
I was just gonna say that I'd like to thank the developer for their patience while we kind of figured this all out. So, I think we got it right now. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, roll call vote. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0. Okay, moving on to item D. That is one reading for the resolution regarding contract zones, and that is Counselor Hatch.
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. Over the course of several months, the City Council has reviewed the matter of contract zones with a specific focus on pre-January 2021 contract zones. After careful review, coordination with city staff, and consultation with legal counsel, the attached resolution has been drafted by City Attorney Leah Ration, and the City Attorney Ration is in attendance to answer any questions if they occur. Be it ordered that the Saco City Council hereby approves the order relating to pre-January 2021 contract zones, I move to approve the order.
Motion has been made by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Johnston. Any discussion or comment? Counselor Johnston, then Counselor Hatch.
Ah, well, I was gonna say, I probably have all sorts of comments, but it sounds as though that, you know, we have requests. We had several emails that were sent to us that I thought raised pretty valid questions. And it sounds like the city attorney hasn't had an opportunity to address those yet. So, I look forward, I guess, to the answers to those, but I don't think that will be this evening. Is that correct?
Counselor Hatch.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I just brought with me a couple of editorial comments on this contract zone issue that I'd like to share, and then I'm going to make a motion at the end to table. And I've got it scripted, so again, forgive me and indulge me as I try to stay focused on the message that I want to convey here. As the council continues to receive emails from the public regarding the staff fact-finding process and council votes on contract zone issues, I'd like to just offer my own, these are my own editorial comments on that process. The issues that led to this resolution that we're discussing tonight have a long and troubled history. From my perspective, there's a history of many procedural and administrative missteps made by previous staff and elected officials. Those individuals are no longer involved, and this council is now responsible for resolving these issues so we can all move forward. I strongly believe that those currently in staff and administrative roles are unlikely to repeat the missteps of the past, but that remains to be seen. We just need them to help the council look ahead and not be burdened by the past. Specifically, regarding the resolution of the contract zone issue, there have been some public claims that staff and administration have dictated to, and I quote and muzzled, the City Council during this process. And I personally find these comments disrespectful to the process. When I joined the council in April of 2021, I brought four decades of experience in the banking industry. I viewed my role on the council as similar to serving on a corporate board of directors. During my career, I've served as a board director for a small, family-owned bank, a local credit union, and various nonprofit organizations within the community. I've also held middle and senior management positions at several main-based banks, reporting directly to their respective boards of directors. And in all these organizations, the daily operations follow a consistent process. Staff manages basic tasks. Management uses the work to make operational decisions, and the board reviews and votes to approve or reject those decisions when required. Intimidation tactics are usually not tolerated at any level. We do not function in a perfect procedural world, so each level of the decision-making process must operate at its highest possible level of competency and respect. Constructive challenges and debates by decision-makers at each stage typically lead to productive outcomes. As a city counselor, I believe my record of openly debating issues speaks for itself. I can assure you that I have never been dictated to or muzzled since serving under the current mayor. I have engaged productively and respectfully behind the scenes with our immediate former city administrator. I'm also productively and respectfully engaged with our current interim city administrator and city council. Sometimes issues require debate in executive session, which by law are considered muzzled. That is the extent of the muzzling process that I have experienced. Like other business organizations I've worked for or managed, successfully running a municipal government is very challenging and complex. Accusing staff and administration of dictating to and/or muzzling city council is very disrespectful to them, and frankly, condescending toward those of us sitting on the council. So, I respectfully ask that as these and other critical council decisions unfold, public criticism be based on documented facts, not social media-inspired disrespectful accusations. I'd like to thank you all for indulging me in this. I'd like to thank you all for indulging me in this. Now, at that point, I would like to make a motion to table this issue until the November 24th meeting.
Thank you. Motion has been made to table by Councilor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Johnston. Roll call vote. Councilor Edwards?
Yes.
Councilor Parks?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero. All right. Thank you, everyone, for those. Item number eight, it is administrative update. Administrator Prescott?
Saco Schools opens bids for new school construction project. Saco Schools Administration held a public bid opening on October 29th for the construction of our new primary and elementary schools. Approved by a 74% majority of voters in June 2024, this bond initiative will result in a modern consolidated school facility with Saco Primary School, pre-k and kindergarten, and Saco Elementary School, first through fifth grade, established off Millbrook Road. Saco will receive more than $100 million in state funds for the project, 72% of the total project cost. There's more details on the Saco bid information and results that you can see on the website, and additional details will be shared at upcoming school board meetings. Additionally, a groundbreaking ceremony is being planned for December 4th at 11:00 a.m., and the project is generally on track. Saco Food Drive, community organizations are coming together to host the Saco Food Drive on Friday, November 22nd, from 10:00 to 2:00 p.m. Age Friendly Saco, Biddeford Saco Rotary Club, Saco Bay Rotary Club, and city departments are joining up to collect food donations for the Saco Meals program and Saco Food Pantry. Community members can drop off non-perishable food or cash to any of the three locations at Saco Fire Department, Saco Community Center, or Saco Food Pantry, and all donations will benefit the Saco Food Pantry and Saco Meals program. For more information, you can contact Age Friendly Saco office at (207) 710-5029. And just for clarity, the November 22nd date I referenced is Saturday, November 22nd, not Friday, so we'll make sure that gets updated in the report here. Age Friendly Saco Sand Buckets for Seniors program, the annual Age Friendly Saco program Sand Buckets for Seniors is back for another year of sand-salt mixed distribution. On November 15th, volunteers from TA joined AFS to fill and sand buckets with the help of Saco Public Works. These buckets are available for pickup or drop-off to residents age 65-plus. So to request a drop-off or arrange a pickup, please call the Age Friendly Saco office at[773.20][773.20](207) 710-5029. Veterans Day Recap, community members line Main Street on November 11th for the annual Biddeford Saco Veterans Day Parade and ceremonies honoring all who have served in the United States Armed Forces. Veterans, families, and residents from both cities came together in gratitude, reflection, and community spirit. The City of Saco extends its sincere thanks to Heart of Biddeford for organizing the event and to the Biddeford and Saco Police, Fire, Public Works, and Parks and Recreation Departments for ensuring a safe and successful day. The ceremony has paid special tribute to General Wallace H. Nutting, a distinguished Maine veteran who grew up in Saco and served as Biddeford's mayor from 2003 to 2007. At the opening ceremony, our mayor presented General Lang's children, Elizabeth, John, Katie, and Sally, with a framed photo of their parents from Saco's 250th Anniversary Parade in 2012. We thank all who have served and invite our community to take a moment to reflect on the sacrifices made in service to our nation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
I would just like to add an update to the food drive. Tomorrow night at Saco Middle School, in coordination with Saco Park and Rec Department and Saco Middle School, there will be a spaghetti dinner and food drive. So please come enjoy a free spaghetti dinner, and then bring your non-perishable items for drop-off and/or donations for the school department to work on their portion of the food drive as well. And that's at Saco Middle School, 5:00 to 7:30.
All right. Thank you very much. Item number nine, council discussion and comment. Any councilors wishing to share? Councilor Hewitt?
Um, I just want to let you know that on November 20th at 3 o'clock, there's going to be a ribbon-cutting by the Art Committee for the Parks and Rec mural, which has been completed. Also, I want to congratulate Thornton Academy Varsity Football for winning the Class A South Championship. They'll be playing in the state championship game this Saturday in Portland at the Fitzpatrick Stadium. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, moving on to item number 10. That is executive session. Is there a motion? Councilor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. Be it ordered that the City Council enter into executive session pursuant to MRSI Title 1, Chapter 13, Subchapter 1, Section 405.6, Section E, consultation between the municipality and its attorney, intercreditor agreement request.
Motion has been made by Councilor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Hewitt. Roll call vote. Councilor Edwards?
Yes.
Councilor Parks?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero to enter into executive session at 6:57 p.m., and we will be downstairs in the conference room?
Yes.
Good evening and welcome back. Is there a motion to exit executive session?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Johnson. Roll call vote. Council Edwards?
Yes.
Council Parks?
Yes.
Council Hatch?
Yes.
Council Hewitt?
Yes.
And Council Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0 to exit executive session at 7:57. Council Hatch, is there a report?
There is, Madam Mayor. I move that the City Council not enter into the intercreditor agreement with Quimby and Sewell Foundation.
Second.
Motion has been made by Council Hatch, second by Council Johnson. Roll call vote. Council Edwards?
Yes.
Council Parks?
Yes.
Council Hatch?
Yes.
Council Hewitt?
Yes.
And Council Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. Moving on to item 12, that is adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion made by Council Johnson, second?
Second.
Second by Council Hewitt. Roll call vote. Council Edwards?
No.
Council Parks?
Yes.
Council Hatch?
Yes.
Council Hewitt?
Yes.
And Council Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-1. You're lucky we're running on a close majority here, so... Motion approved, 4-1 at 7:58. Thank you everyone and have a great night.